Six o'clock, I'd like to call the school board meeting to order at this time. And Priscilla, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Salute to the New Mexico state flag, please.
Where is it?
Where is the flag?
Well, we just have to do it as these.
Faces.
The wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of our friendship among the United Nations.
Yeah, Priscilla, thank you.
Who are you?
Yeah, that was kind of a first time, I guess, just standing to the wall and doing the pledge of allegiance. So, but every, every meeting that we have at the schools, you know, they're all different. But I want to thank everybody that's here this evening. If you're here as a parent, that's good. If you're here as a staff member, that's also good. And we have some students here, and I'd like to thank you for being here. We have several things to discuss. I'd like to go to item two, approval of the agenda, board members. Oh, okay. Yeah, roll call.
Charles, Kevin Mitchell?
Here.
Priscilla Manilito?
Present.
Michael Shaw?
Here.
Chris Mortensen?
Here.
Charles Long?
Here. I've been away from the meetings a few times, so I guess I forgot how to. Anyway, item number two, we do have a quorum. To proceed with the meeting, let's go to item two, approval of the agenda, board members.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay, motions been made by Michael Shaw to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, Priscilla Manilito, second motion, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Okay, I guess what we'll do is we'll defer the meeting minutes to the next regular meeting. We don't have the meeting minutes here this evening. And let's go down to item number four.
Mr. Long, I would like to go ahead and motion to defer the August 26, 2019 minutes to the next meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Michael Shaw. Motion was made by Priscilla Manilito to defer the August 26 regular meeting to our next board member, uh, board meeting. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we taking care of that. Let's go to item number four, approval of the consent agenda items. And there is, um...
Mr. Long, there is no four I this evening, so I'll make sure that's clear on the consent agenda. It's just four A through four H.
Okay.
I have one question on the, um, four D, um, approval of memorandum of agreement between McKinley County Schools. Um, is it just Tohachi? Because further down it, um, under number one, Tohachi Middle School, and it has, Amia Mira High School will do this using one or more of the following techniques.
Mike?
President Long, Mr. Shaw, Dr. Paletta White, he will give you an update on what this is specifically asking the board to approve.
Okay, before I have Paletta speak, I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Okay, motion by...
This is what we're discussing right now, under the consent.
Well, I just need a motion then. After that, she'll answer your, your question, and then, once it's cleared up, we vote on it. So I just need a motion. So, Priscilla, Manilito made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Mitchell. So we have a standing motion, Paletta?
[inaudible]
Go ahead.
Mr. Shaw, um, the memorandum of agreement between our school district and McKinley County Sinapsa Coalition for this tonight is for Tohachi Middle School. We have JFK and Amia Mira on a three-year agreement, and this is for two years because they wanted to add Tohachi Middle to, to their coalition and the services they are providing. So this is just for a two-year, and at the, at the end of the sec, this two-year, we will be coming bringing the memorandum for all schools again.
So it's just to add Tohachi to the existing agreement?
Yes. Right.
Correct, okay.
But under number one, it has, Amia Mira High School will do this using one or more of the following. Is that just a typo or...
Yes, that's a typo, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do.
Okay, answering your question, Michael?
I answered my question.
Question. We have a standing motion to approve the consent agenda items. If there's no further questions or comments on it, let's vote on it, roll call. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we approve our consent agenda items. Thank you, board members. Let's go down to study circle. We do have two public comment, Brenda Yazi. You have the mic?
Do you have a paper? No? Good evening, Yate. I'm Brenda Yazi. I'm the recruiter at Navajo Technical University. Our very own Navajo University, located on the Navajo Nation in Crown Point, Chingri, Tisnasbans, also in Kirtland and Zuni, New Mexico. We're here to serve the Navajo Nation. All students, we're open enrollment, we have students at a national and international level. Just to provide brief information, we do provide transportation every day to Gallup, Farmington, Pepló Pantado, and Yatehe on a daily basis. We have childcare, Navajo Nation childcare, we have Intu childcare, we have residential housing, male, female, we also have family housing, right there on campus, the Navajo Nation Scholarship, and also the Department for Self-Alliance. For me, as a recruiter, I want all Navajo students to have a chance and an opportunity at a higher, at a higher university. That's why I'm here, to provide the services, also have a folder. One of the reasons I'm here is collaboration among the high schools and Navajo Technical University. Last week, a few weeks ago, there was a college day at Amia Mira High School, college day at Gallup High School, we were not invited. I mentioned this to one of the board members before, we're being left out. We're the Navajo Nation University, here to help the Navajo Nation. We have a bachelor's degree in biology, we have a bachelor's degree in animal science. We're at that level, at the university level, to serve our Navajo students, and it's not happening, the collaboration is not happening. Recently, at Open House, when I go around and listen to the radio station, I look at the newspaper, that's how I find my information. I personally went in person to all the high schools in the district, gave them that handshake, gave them my card, my information. If there's any events or activities that we can attend, please notify me. Then on Facebook or social media, or later on from someone, were you at the college day? No. Recently, Amia Mira, Gallup High School, we were not invited. Open House, I gave the information to the public information officer. If anything is going on with the district, please let me know. But I heard it on the radio, so I called, and I invited myself, and I don't want that to happen. I want every Navajo student, because the Gallup School District has a pop, student population of ninety percent Navajo or higher. Every one of them deserves a chance and an opportunity, and that's what I tell them when I go out. The reason why I'm here, this summer, I went to the chapter houses, and I spoke to summer youth workers at the chapters in this whole area, all the way to Reima Chichotca, to Lake Valley, White Horse Lake, and Sayator Rock Springs. And I give them information on Intu, and they don't know. They don't know about Intu. We have free summer camps this summer, robotics, math, riding camps, horse schools, environmental science, all for free. I send out the email, mass email to all the counselors and principals, I do a follow-up visit, nothing is visible. The students are not getting that information I'm sending out to the schools. So here, I'm asking that the schools work with us, and like I said, I mentioned this to one of the board members, that this was happening. Our students, our Navajo students are losing out on free educational opportunities in their very own community because the mission stopped somewhere. I want to have that collaboration. I don't want to have to call the principal just to get into the school to do a presentation, which happened at Crown Point High School. I kept calling and emailing to the point where I had to call the principal, can you please get me into the school? And that's how it was the last year, I don't want that this year. And if the school district is providing transportation for Crown Point High School to go to UNM Gallup Campus, any other school, any other school should provide transportation to dual credit students at Navajo Technical University. So that's what I wanted to bring here, because today, I was welcome at Gallup Central, but the Open House recently, I invited myself in, and I don't want it to be that way. I want every Navajo student to have a chance and an opportunity at higher education at their very own university in Crown Point, New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Cecil Perry III.
Hello, I am, I'm Cecil Perry III, and I would like you guys to thank, thank you guys for coming out and taking our requests.
Put your mic up a little.
Like this?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Cool. Woo, okay. I think it's a bit far. Thanks. Anyway, I would like to thank you guys for coming out and coming to do our complaints and our requests, but I would like your guys' uh, your help with the, the safety of our students on this road up here. Okay, and we only, if you guys came in from this side, you guys only have a two-lane, which is one going westbound, one going eastbound. We need some kind of merging lanes on either both sides or one side for the, for the buses, because you have a majority of people who are going to work in the morning, they don't know anything about going out that way, so they speed down this road, and I'm, I'm a driver myself, I park at the school, and there's countless times where I've almost got hit, just from reckless drivers coming from my way. So I would really appreciate it if you guys would help me, uh, to help build, either write a support letter or something of that nature, to get a merging lane, so I can, so, you know, buses and other students can merge on to the school, right? And then, plus, you got people really just, just, just hauling butt down this road. And we do have officers occasionally come down and sit, and that stops once in a while, but I would like if there's any way to incorporate, uh, speed bumps of any kind along this road down here, because it is endangering the students at this basketball court, it is endangering the students that are coming from school from this way, and from this side, on, on this way, and it's endangering the teachers as well, because the teachers, as you guys know, is just right up there. So when they're coming down, they're at risk, and it's Navajo Nation, so nobody really pays attention to the laws, but people are really going fast down here. I mean, seriously. And another thing we wanted to do is, I'm the senior class president, so I wanted to leave a legacy item behind of some kind. What we did before was this sign up here, it was gray, it was kinda, it was kinda depressing, to be honest. So, it was. And, well, we wanted, we painted it, so it looks a little bit more flashy, but what we wanted to do is have incorporate a PSA board, a Public Announcement Service Board, to, to announce our games, because to sometimes, not even people that live right next, to, you know, right across the street, they don't even know that there's a game going on. I had my little nephew who plays football, I didn't know his game was going on, and I live in the same house. So, another thing is, I say I got legacy items, I got the PSA board, I got the speed bumps, that's all I really wanted to address for now. I don't, I, I would really go to my principal, but he is so caught up in so many things, I would not like to bother him in any way, because he's just caught, I mean, I see, I mean, he looks stressed out, to be honest, he does. And what we wanted to do is, on these tanks up here, is to have Home of the Hawks, because I know Wingate has that weird W, Tohachi has a T, uh, we don't have anything. We just have that little inky binky sign that's right there, says Thru School, that's it. So we want to incorporate either Home of the Hawks or something of that nature, maybe a big old hawk on these water towers here, and then, but the, my main concern though, is the PSA board and safety, is especially the safety of the students, because there, I got, there are other students who drive as well, and I'm afraid, and I do not want to do another moment of silence, because that is just depressing. So, thank you for listening to my concern and propositions for the school.
Thank you. Let's go down to five B reports, superintendent.
President Long, members of the board, members of the community, as we travel around to the, throughout the county, what I try to do is just give a little update, it's not all encompassing, but some of the things that have happened in those areas, whether it has to do with construction, or other things, or academic growth, or whatever it might be, in that community. And so tonight, I just wanted to give a, a quick update before our other items, and for dual credit and enrollment, and before we continue on the meeting, I just want to give you a few things that have happened in Thru recently. Thru's a special place for me, just went down to the new elementary school that's being built. I was a month married before we moved, I think, into the, the old teachage unit that just got torn down there, but it was so nice to see a new school being built for this community, in addition to Tohachi Mid, and hopefully in the near future, we can also do a Tohachi High School. But for Toh, or, no, sorry, Thru High School, they don't need one over Tohachi, right?
What?
No. So I wanted to let people know that that's, the new elementary school here in Thru is about eighteen million dollars for that school. We just did a tour through it today, several of us had a chance to walk through and see the kind of structure that will be for your students here in Thru, and it's going to be beautiful. The, the classrooms are, are good sized, the, the layout of the school is, for safety purposes, is, is very nice, looking at it from administrator point of view. We're really excited to see what that school looks like as it, as it gets finished, and we're hoping to be done at the latest in May, at the earliest in March, and then we'll have to decide when we're going to move in, or when we're not going to move in, might be the, might be the following year, but maybe at the end of this year, we'll be able to get in. In addition, this last year, we also had the track replaced or resurfaced. We're currently have framed throwing pits for the track, they'll have cages around them, those cages will be put in after it's poured by, by the district. Some of you may have noticed that Thru High School recently, this last year, got painted, it also received over a hundred thousand dollars, I believe, of new furniture in the school, or close to a hundred thousand dollars worth of new furniture. The old teachers that I used to live in, actually, I lived in two different teachers, one at the high school, and then one down here, but all of those old ones have been demolished. Those have been an eyesore for the community for many years, since the new ones have been put in, and so it's good to have those gone. We, we will be asking for eight more units, and maybe more in the future, of new teachage housing for Thru here in the near fu, actually, we've asked for it, we're waiting for the state to let us know whether, whether they're going to approve that or not. If they don't approve it, we'll still look to find funds to do that. We've also, to try to ensure that we're able to keep staff, keep teachers in our area, because in the rural parts of our county, we have a harder time keeping teachers and giving them the benefits they need to make this a, a good place to stay, in addition to working with our students and having that reward. We've also offered free rent for all teachers in all of our county schools, which includes Thru. And a couple other items, these are probably more important than all the things I talked about before, but for this particular school, through middle school, I believe it was last year, was number one in growth for all middle schools in McKinley County, and I think that's pretty exciting. And we need to keep celebrating that, and let our students know that they can, they can perform and do well, and we appreciate the teachers here and the staff here that push our students and set high expectations for them, they did great two years ago. This last year, the elementary school came in third of the eighteen elementaries, so there's seven middle schools in the county, and there's eighteen elementaries, and Thru Elementary came in number three in growth for elementary schools. And then there's, lastly, there's been a lot of work at the high school, as the board has asked administration to focus more on preparing students for their careers, not just graduation, so that when they graduate, they are more prepared to enter the workforce. And so this year is a kind of our trial startup year for career pathways, and next year, we'll go full-blown, all students will be entering a career pathway, and so Mr. Senna and district staff and teachers and the school at the, at the high school has been working really hard to make sure that we implement career pathways, and I, how many do you have new this year, Mr. Senna?
We have five pathways.
Five new pathways. I had asked that the school, high schools do three, Thru decided to start five, and so we're excited for that, and there'll be more even next year, so we're excited for the high school also. And so Mr. Long, members of the board, if you have any questions for me, I'm welcome to answer those, but...
Board members, questions?
Then I'll go on to the next item.
Hold on, Mr. Hyatt, I'm sorry, I've got food in my mouth.
That's why I asked, just kidding.
He knows me very well, I always have some questions or something to say. I just want to say thank you, um, to my colleagues, first of all, for allowing us to have this board meeting here. I know that we have to go out into our communities, but I just want to thank you guys for this, and, um, having our staff here, having our students, and, um, our parents here this evening. I also would like to say, um, um, thank you to, um, everything that Mr. Hyatt has, um, mentioned tonight, a lot of that pertains to us as board members, putting it in motion and, um, listening to our students and our staff, and I really appreciate that, that we, we collaborate and we kind of have that sense of what our student body needs, and I'm thankful, since this is my hometown here in Thru. I was raised here, I graduated from here, and I raised my children here, they graduated from here, I have one more left, Myaj, um, he's a senior this year. So I just want to thank you guys, and then the staff that's here. Could you guys all just stand to, to, so we could show you our gratitude, that we appreciate you guys being here this evening? Um, I know we have all our staff members, um, here, thank you so much. And as a mom, and as a board member, I'm, I'm so thankful for your dedication to our students here in Thru, and I really appreciate you guys being here at this meeting tonight. So, thank you, and I just didn't have no questions, Mr. Hyatt, but thanks, I just wanted to mention that.
All right. Uh, Mr. Long, members of the board, uh, thank you for those comments. We're going to move on to enrollment in dual credit, and I have invited Dr. Paletta White and Lori Clark, who's supervisor over our STARS, which is our data reporting to the state. Um, this is a question that came from the board, or an ask from the board, to do a report on dual credit and enrollment, and so, we kind of put together what we, what we could for this, and then obviously, we will, we'll take questions afterwards. And I apologize, this has taken a few meetings to get done, just with people's schedules and travel, we were able to finally do it this meeting, so I'll turn the time over to them.
Do you have an extra copy of that, sir? Is it in our packet?
No, I think it was separate. They passed them up, Priscilla.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Did you get one? Oh, it's right here, underneath yours.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, members of the board. You have a packet in front of you, and before we go through the packet, I'd like to say publicly thank Lori, Lori Clark, our STARS team person, she's a guru that put all this stuff together, so she's got, she's awesome. Okay, the first page are the number of enrolled students from last year in October on the forty-day count, and then the enrollment as of Friday. So as you can tell, we have fifty-eight more students this year than we did last year, and those are on the, the first page. We have McKinley Academy students from all of our high schools, so those are the Gallup McKinley County, McKinley Academy students that are in the red font, those are their home schools, and how many students from, from last year versus this year, so we have an increase in the lot of Gallup, McKinley Academy students. Okay, so that's page one. Page two is about dual credit courses. We have the tables there, um, from last year's counts, and then as of, um, counts as of today. Okay, and then you have your first paragraph there, McKinley Academy students, how many of students enrolled. Last year, we had two-hundred-and-forty students total in the McKinley Academy program, this year, we have three-hundred-and-sixty-nine. So we have a hundred-and-twenty-nine more students enrolled in that particular program from la, from this year to, from last year. Okay, and then, and then for dual credit courses, all the students who are not in McKinley Academy program, we had last year, we had four-hundred-and-nine students who were taking at least one dual credit course, and this year, we have increased by thirty-seven to a count of four-hundred-and-sixty-seven students taking dual credit courses. So that's as of this year, as of today. We're now including second semester, so second semester will, will increase that number as well. Okay? Do you want to go through the next, please?
So starting on page three is, I, what I did is I broke it down by the list of courses that the students are taking, because we do have a lot of students who are taking more than one dual credit course. So as you look through the table, the first page on page three is semester one for the eighteen-nineteen school year, and that's the list of all the courses, how many students were taking each of those courses per school, to give you a grand total of seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine. And then on, starting on page five, is the number of McKinley Academy students and the courses they took. Again, it's broken down by their home school, so we had a grand total of six-hundred-and-eighty-one dual credit courses. So altogether, last year, we had almost thirteen-hundred dual credit courses taken for the school year. Then this year, starting, um, I guess Friday, as of Friday, I have a list of all of the courses that the students are currently enrolled in, and how many students per school. So for the non-Minkey Academy students, we have a grand total of eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven. And then for the McKinley Academy students, we have one-thousand-and-eighty. So we are looking at over eighteen-hundred classes that are being... So we are looking at over eighteen-hundred classes that are being taken this semester for dual credit.
If I could just add, the board's goal was to increase that to a thousand, so we're going to have to up our goal, we're going to have to go up into several thousand for the next few years.
Just a final note, comparing this year as of today's dual credit courses versus last year, this, we have one-hundred-and-forty-eight more courses being taken this semester for, which one is this one, for our students that are not enrolled in McKinley Academy. For McKinley Academy students, we have, hold on, I just lost.
Three-hundred and something.
We have three-hundred-and-ninety-nine more courses that they're taking, so close to four-hundred. So our ta- our students are taking on the challenge of dual credit courses, and it's, it's great, and they're really learning and making us move forward faster.
And they're walking out the door with college credit.
Can you speak a, a little bit about the enrollment process into those courses, how that happens at the school sites?
Sure. So at the school level, the students work with the counselors, the counselors are doing a really great job of promoting dual credit and the various entities that we're working with. We have online courses with NTU, with Eastern New Mexico, with New Mexico State, with UNM. So the counselors work with the students on the application process for each one of those entities, and then they make sure that they communicate with that entity and make sure that the students enrolled in that class. And then we put them in our student information system so that we can progress and make sure that there's grades put in there that's on their transcript, so they get a transcript from the university, and they get a transcript from the high school that shows they got high school credit and college credit.
In addition, Dr. White, thank you. If you could also touch on AP courses and the new online opportunities that are growing in our area?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Members of the board, you just approved an agreement with New Mexico Ped, and basically what New Mexico Ped is offering is AP courses online, and it's an agreement with that we, the school district, provide the, a, online AP courses for all of our students, and right now we have several students that were interested, some of them decided to back out, some of them are moving forward, and they're going to be taking the AP exam as well in May too, when they get done with the classes. So AP is also moving forward with that, and we do have some AP courses currently being taught by our teachers who are, went through the AP training over the summer, and tho- those students will also be taking the AP exam in May.
If I could add a little bit of information also to some of the things happening is, I think the board needs to know that some of the pathways that the Public Education Department is, is using for students to be able to graduate, there's several different paths they can go, they're, they're adjusting that now and expanding it, but one of them is to make sure that students look at the pathway of dual credit, and so I, our district has really expanded those opportunities for dual credit and also the AP courses. We're trying to give students as many opportunities as possible, and really kind of venturing into the online also, because it's hard for students that want to stay at their home school to get some of those opportunities, and so we're looking to, like Dr. White said, partner with PED to offer more opportunities there, and we're also looking at some other software and other cyber type of academies to help grow opportunities for students. And as you know, board members, this came up last year, we also expanded, AP courses used to be the only course that was graded on a five-point-O scale rather than a four-point-O scale, and last year we increased it so that all dual credit that are going towards a associate's degree and also all AP courses are, are on a five-point-O scale, so. We'll take questions from the board at this time.
Questions, board members?
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, I have a couple, with the, um, the, I just, I attended a meeting not too long ago with some of our Native American, our BIE schools and grant schools, and I just would like to say that they were very impressed with what we're doing and kind of getting after Navajo Nation for not implementing, and should be looking towards us to how we're doing our career pathways and really emphasizing McKinley Academy, and so I guess it's working through the grapevine, the news of our achievements here, and there's even parents saying they want to bring our kid, their kids back from the BIE schools back into the public school, so I just wanted, so maybe our enrollment will go up in that way. Have we really got a handle on our students that are in athletics that want to do the McKinley Academy, because I think that was one issue we had in the past, and I just don't want it to be a hindrance anymore, I know a year's gone by since we've implemented this, and the other question is the communication of, between the schools, from their home school to the academy, you know, there was some issues with communication to our McKinley Academy students.
Sure, Dr., President Long, Ms. Mangalito, I'll start with the second question first, with communication. I have set the expectation for all high school principals, and we have worked even more closely this year with them to make sure that they have people designated within their school, to make sure that announcements, when they're sent out to the school, whether it's on the intercom, whatever it might be, that those are also getting sent out to McKinley Academy students that are off-campus. This is, this has been a tough learning year for that, this last year, this year we're hoping to have significant improvement, and I'll hold our principals accountable to that if I have any specific issues with that. The second, or the first question that you had was regarding athletics, we have, there may be some other ways in which we can improve that, but we've tried to do all we can to make sure that buses are traveling at the times where students can get back to their school sites as much as possible, to make sure that students can participate in athletics and activities at their school site. It is a challenge, I'm not sure that we'll ever be able to get it perfect because there is a distance to travel, Ramah, Navajo are almost an hour away, trying to get college courses scheduled so that they can take a bus back to those sites and still catch their buses that take them home, it's, it's a little tricky, but we've adjusted schedules the best we can to make sure that we can accommodate students. A lot of programs, if you go up to Farmington, I believe their early college programs still, they don't allow students to participate in athletics, they force them to strictly focus on their, their academics and not participate in extracurricular activities, which we think is a detriment, so we're trying to do our best to accommodate th- those students, and it is a little bit more complicated for, for students, they have a lot of travel time, there's obviously an extra amount of studying that goes into some college courses, dealing with the, the rigor that they're dealing with, but we don't want to discourage any student, and we want them to be able to participate, so we're doing the best that we can with that, but we're always open for suggestions.
Mr. Hyatt, I just had a, a, a quick comment on, on some of those athletic concerns, I've had, oh my gosh, like, conversation after conversation with my sixteen-year-old who plays, you know, plays basketball, and then he's also, he's also at McKinley Academy this year, and it's been kind of a learning curve for him, you know, the first day he brought home his schedule, and he's got a, you know, math class Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, it starts at like two in the afternoon. I told him, dude, that's just not going to work, if you're going to play sports, it's not going to work, and you're going to need to go down and talk to them and help work on rearranging your schedule, and, you know, I've heard him cry about the homework load and stuff like that, and it's just, I just tell him, this is how the world, the real world works. You want to, you want to be in college and take college classes, it, it's going to take a significantly readjustment of your lifestyle, you need to start early in the morning and get stuff knocked out, if you want to have any chance of being successful at sports and academics, you just have to, you got to grind it out, and it's been, you know, it's been a good lesson for him, a good life lesson for him, I think, more than anything, just starting your day early and don't, you know, you, I mean, you can't have a math class at two o'clock in the afternoon, everybody knows that. And so, and, and so, you know, working with him about, you know, on, on his schedule, and, and hey, he was able to go down and, and talk to him and, and, you know, work, work his way through the system and figure out how to, how to change him, and, you know, lesson learned, and it'll be a, you know, he'll, he'll be a better student because of it. The next semester, he'll look at this and he'll say, oh, that's not going to work, we're going to have to get out ahead of this, and it's been, you know, I mean, th- those are lessons I, I did when I was like twenty years old, and I, you know, freshman in college, and I had to learn those things, and, and I'm thankful for the opportunity he has to learn those life, life lessons when he's sixteen. That's, I, I say, good job and bring on, bring on the hardship, it'll, it'll help him out in the long run.
We'll let him know that, it's on, this is going to be on YouTube forever, so this video, so, I'm sure he appreciates you talking about him and his struggles.
We can watch that later.
Any other questions, board members?
Any other questions, board members?
No.
Attention. Question? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, ladies.
Study circle number three, board reports, board members?
I don't have anything significant to report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Long, I just have one thing, on the region meeting, I just want to say that that is coming into full swing, we've been really working with SFE on arrangements and getting the five other district, or seven other districts here for the region one meeting, and don't forget chef nails, that don't forget your chef.
Oh, yeah, those coats or whatever, yeah.
Your chef jackets on that day, we're kind of making it more of a Mexican kind of meal this time, he's got some really, we, we sat down and planned some, the menu out, and then we also have, from the New Mexico School Board Association Executive Board, they, we chose a topic, so we'll be doing a short, one-hour training on that, but, and we're, we're looking at kind of moving the agenda a little bit to come right in and have them eat, have all the other board members kind of eat, because we, remember how we usually do that kind of later down? We want to get kind of the eating out of the way, because the food's already going to be set up, but it's going good, and I, and I just want to send a reminder out for you guys, don't forget your, your chef coats.
Let's, let's make sure he knows it's real Mexican food, not that fake Arizona stuff.
Thank you, Priscilla. You got the information, board members, so ink it on your calendar.
Hatch green chili.
Hatch green chili, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's the best green chili in the world. Board reports, some of you may know I'm also the chapter president for Vicenti, which is north of Crown Point, and there's a meeting, I scheduled a meeting and I forgot about the school board meeting, so there was a conflict, there's a meeting, I'm over here, and the only report I have, I guess, is that I've asked the three principals at the three schools in Crown Point to go to that meeting and introduce themselves. I think that's something that we need to do more often, you know, get our principals to go to chapter meetings, just to introduce themselves, whatever, that's the only report I have. Let's go down to, well, notices and communication, board members, you can read that on your own, let's go down to new business. New business A, adopt a resolution to grant a waiver for board member participation in the procurement process of tangible goods and services for city vending to conduct business with the district. Javana?
President Long, members of the board, as you know, this is a, a repeat action item that was tabled, and Ms. Hanks has brought the information that you requested, so that we can finish this discussion. Thank you.
President Long, members of the board, superintendent, members of the audience, the inquiry at the last meeting was in regards to the types of vending machines at each school site, and that report was prepared and given to everyone except for Mr. Mortensen, as Mr. Mortensen will not be participating in this action item. And so I'm hoping that these will answer any queries that you have about vending machines. There was also a question regarding competitive sales, I did include the New Mexico State Rules and Regulations Regarding Competitive Sales, and I did include a picture of the vending machines and how they're restricted, this is how the vending machines are actually restricted during competitive sale times, they're actually locked so that you can't actually make the selection on the vending machine. So this, this resolution actually has two uses, the first is in compliance with New Mexico procurement law, it's something that's done on a regular basis, all communities have related parties. If a related party is a board member, then what we do is make sure that all solicitations are done through the competitive process, which is either a bid or RFP. The other piece of this is the vending machines, although the district does not buy anything directly from the vendor in this circumstance, it is appropriate for us to be transparent and acknowledge that relationship as well. I will stand for any questions that any board member has on this.
Question, board members?
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Long, I would like to ask Javana, so one of our biggest concern was the money that the vending machines were making and how they are documented and the funds are being utilized once it's collected. I see some say, like, I'm looking at Tharoo Mid-School, and it says, the student council, I guess, are the parties affiliated with it, but then it says less than eleven dollars. So they're making less than eleven dollars on the vending machine a month, a week?
Sure, and, and so this is typically monthly revenue.
Okay.
And so one of the issues that you have is that vending machines only make commission, so it's based upon the sale of the items that are actually located within the vending machine, and, and that could be for multiple reasons. You'll also notice some of them mention no commission, as I mentioned earlier, some people have vending machines for convenience, but they choose not to make a commission, they just sell the items at cost. If you notice the various accounts that are listed, so those that receive commissions are done through our student activity funds, and those are through the activity fundraising procedures that were approved by the board two years ago. Those are monitored by central office, reconciled on a monthly basis, and provided in our annual audit report.
So on the, so what are they used for, because I, like, one has, again, with Tharoo High School, has an average a hundred-and-fifteen dollars a month, what is that money used for, it's in the teacher's lounge, both of them, how do they, how do they utilize that funding?
Sure, so especially those that are in the teacher courtesy account, those can be used for anything, and typically what we see in teacher courtesy through student activity funds are usually light snacks at meetings that teachers may have, it can also be utilized to send flowers in the event that you have a staff member that experiences a loss. Every dis- every school does it a little bit differently, it's usually through the collaboration of the building leadership team.
Any questions, Kevin? Danielle?
I, I hope this satisfies the inquiry that you had.
Yes.
Any other questions, my board members?
I would like to make the motion, we adopt a resolution to grant a waiver for board member participation in the procurement process of tangible goods and services for city vending to conduct business with the business.
My second?
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaaf to approve this resolution, second by Priscilla Mangalito, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, board members, thank you, Javana. Let's go to new business B.
Mr. Mr., Long, should, should we, should we make it known that he's abstaining, just?
Yeah, we should do that.
Yeah, for the record, I think we need to document that he is abstaining.
I'm sorry, I just assumed you would, and so I will ask you, I'll do, roll call again just to verify. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf? Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Epstein.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members, and thank you, Priscilla, for bringing that out. Ishha, raiyo. Let's go to, um, uh, new business B, approval for board members to attend the Mexico School Board Association upcoming meetings and conference for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year.
Mr. Long, members of the board, I know this is, looks a little bit, usually something like this would be on a consent, um, but I just wanted to make sure that we're gonna try to streamline some of these approvals. Uh, instead of doing them for every single meeting that we do, I know last year, we did that for the legislative session, so that anytime we have a legislative meeting throughout the year, we pre-approve that, so that we're not trying to always juggle, uh, when those meetings take place, 'cause it's kinda hard to anticipate. Um, this one's a little easier to anticipate, because they put them on the calendar, but I thought it would just be cleaner to list all the conferences, so that we don't have to potentially forget a conference or make a mistake, and I think this'll just streamline our process of granting approval to go on travel. And so, that's the purpose, this item is on an action item and not a consent.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, board members, I want to entertain a motion on this item.
Don't move.
Okay, motion by Priscilla Manilto to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Mitchell, roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, Mike. I believe this takes care of, uh, the business that we have before us, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Long, um, before we adjourn, I would like to request to see if we can schedule in, um, a meeting that we can discuss, um, impact aid with some of our leaders, and maybe start some kinda plan of what we're gonna be doing, uh, for the next session, and just being really prepared for that, um, maybe setting some of our own board goals for the legislative session also, just to start thinking about that in that direction. So, I don't know when we'll be able to do that, but if we could bring our lobbyists in and see if they can, um, start guiding us in the right direction to start planning ahead, sir.
Agushin, thank you. Mike, you've heard the requests, can you identify a date when we, as a board, can convene to discuss impact aid with our lobbyists, and, uh, maybe our local, uh, state reps and state senators?
Absolutely, uh, President Long, Ms. Mangalito, members of the board, I will do that, as you know, we've kinda talked about this in the past, um, lots of things are happening and moving and shaking, I guess we'll say, with respect to impact aid in the state of New Mexico. It is going to, again, be the number one topic that I think, uh, on the education side, uh, that will be heard and will be debated at the next legislative session, uh, which is a shorter session, um, but, uh, it changes almost every day of what's happening, uh, but I do think that Mrs. Mangalito's right, we do need to sit down and talk about this in a, in a session. Some of the things, when you're negotiating on an item like this, uh, you don't necessarily want to make public, because you might give away some of your leverage, and so, I wanna be careful about that, but I think it is good for us to get together and talk about in general some of those things that can help move this forward. Um, as you know, sometimes getting everybody together can be complicated, uh, due to schedules, uh, but I'll do the best that I can to get a, an appropriate meeting that can help us move forward with goals set by you.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
I would like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made by Michael Schaaf to adjourn.
Okay.
Second by Chris Mortensen. Roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangalito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Time?
Six, six fifty-five.
Six fifty-five, we're adjourned. Thank you, and the audience, for coming.